We, oh, I see it. I see it. Good. I saw the little picture in the corner there. Right. It is eight fifty and according to the, so we'll stand for the pledge and open the meeting. All right. I have to remind myself to turn my ringer off. So if anyone else has a phone, check your ringer. Agenda. Anything on the agenda? Any changes?
Yeah, Commissioner Nelson, under Honorable Treasurer, we're adding a renewal. Charlie's place, a renewal. You have that added out to you, but it wasn't in the original agenda, so Mary will take care of it.
Mary, is there, is there a resolution number or it's just a, okay, liquor.
And then furthermore, under, this was discussed at our Finance Committee, under Transit, a resolution five two three one A, you have that in your packet, but we have revised. One that's been handed out to you, so we just want to make that known to the public. And then finally, with the Board's permission, under closed session, if we could have just an item that says approve of bargaining.
That's immediately after.
Yep.
Oh, closed session.
Yes, sir.
So the add, add under, under closed session, after open session, we will tenatively approve a contract. Anything else?
Will be approved.
Motion by John.
I'll second.
Second by Dave to approve the agenda with those changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose motion carries. Minutes, fractions, additions, deletions.
I'm going to, under plant, planning and zoning, page four or five, number three, just doesn't read right. Was on the website on April twelfth and open until May fifteenth. The ad remains open till May fifteenth?
Which one though?
The comprehensive plan update.
Three, it just, to me, it was confusing that I read it. It's on the website.
Yeah.
April twelfth and open, it'll be, it'll be open until May fifteenth. Is that the, correct?
You know, I have to verify that, but my understanding is, is May fifteenth was when we were going to advertise it for a month. And so I think that is probably accurate, but I'm going to put it.
And open until.
Education to Kyle, just have him verify that. I believe he's listening in as well.
Okay, so final RFP was posted on website, April twelfth, and will be open, and will be open until May fifteenth. Yeah. When we're right there, I have a, on the number four, on land use, motion and second to increase Dunlop's professional service. We probably should say from sixteen thousand that was approved at our last meeting to eighteen thousand. Hi, Uncle.
Commissioner Nelson, could I, could I just, I just got information on what Commissioner Oaks has said.
Okay.
Good response.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the, the advertisement in the newsletter, so it, not the newsletter, but in the newspaper that we had submitted. So the submission deadline is Monday, May fifteenth, so that's the, that's the due date.
Open until May fifteen.
And then we were going to review the, the next steps on the next board.
Okay.
So I wonder if we'll review at the May sixteenth board meeting instead of we'll update.
How it's just.
We'll, we'll, we'll review the next steps.
Yeah.
Probably because, because we're not going to review the RFPs.
No.
At that time.
No.
Well, what, what are we, what, what will be updated at the May sixteenth meeting?
We will be looking at who reviews and the review process. Remember, because it said go to planning zone.
Yeah.
Review.
And Commissioner Nelson, we've also got to let you know how many people have submitted.
Yeah, we were going to see if we had twenty, then it should probably be thinned out before we look at them or. So I have a couple on, on page one, under County Administrator, report AMC inquiry for sixteen hundred and seventy-two dollars for, from. Maybe it should state that the, it was that committee, that was for that new committee's dues. Maybe we should state that it should be from that committee dues under letter A. Then on the next, next page, I think letter B could just be crossed out. That's pretty. The inquiry from Detroit Lakes Public Schools, just, I don't know if that's relevant, not to have in the minutes.
Then wasn't this, the money to, to the AMC, wasn't that for two years? Was it, so we, we state that it was for two years too?
It was a two-year commitment.
Yeah.
Was it a two-year?
Because they only asked for half, we decided to pay it all.
Was it sixteen seventy-two the full payment or was that?
I think it was the full payment. I'd like to verify that.
Okay.
I think that was the full payment, but they want, they, yeah, you could pay it in two years, but we just said to pay it all and.
On number, on number three on that page two.
On the mural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I have is, is to paint the one mural, it's not in, it's on county, it's on CASA twenty-two, so C, C S A H twenty-two. That's all, CASA twenty-two. Did you have any?
Yeah, and then also too, it says two murals, but we only talked about one.
We, we did just approve the one.
Yeah, we just approved one. So maybe we should just change that to one, maybe, that we approved.
Or just stay to know that, you know, a second, the second mural will be coming at a later date.
Yeah.
So the motion authorized to, to authorize the first mural painting on box culvert, on a box culvert on CASA twenty-two, that has a bike trail leading to. Okay, moving on, I'm on page three, Human Services. And Erica, maybe on number two and number three, there should just be a little bit more information on, on approve the respite grant amendment. Unless there's a resolution attached to it, that's really too vague, I think, to leave it like that, maybe. And number three, kind of the same, it just should be more substance on those agreements, I think, I think. Just so we're identifying them and as, as amendment we're approving.
Yeah.
Unless there's a resolution, which there's.
Yeah.
So Pat, maybe, maybe Denise is listening.
I know the Encounter Alert Service, I believe, was for public health, so that they get alerted when people are discharged from the hospital and need public, home health nurse, so they're notified right away. And then the, the respite grant amendment was just, I, I believe it's the DHS reimbursement for, to provide respite to Children's Services. Denise can correct me if I'm wrong, if she's on.
I think you're right.
And then I, under IT, it states the forty-one thousand, two sixty-three motions and second to approve the capital expenditure request. To whom is, are we paying that forty-one thousand? Was that through High Point, I think? I think it was High Point Network.
Was it High Point?
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I think that's, Arvic is the hucks and this one was the.
Equipment.
Number one, under Sheriff, the motion second to approve the request to sell forfeit, unclaimed and banded property, I think we should have, refer to the, a list because that's not indefinite proposal, it's a.
Yes.
It should be either listed or as presented, maybe. Anyone have anything else? If we could get a, probably, just refer those in Human Services to an amendment, I don't, it's just kind of referring it to the. Otherwise, anything, if not, entertain a motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. And anything else? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries. Anyone on open form, Nate? Reports and correspondence? Anyone wishing to go on a meeting?
I can go first. Yesterday, I was at a meeting about lake weeds and it was, it was called, it was a meeting by Kelsey Clem. So the Pelican watershed is not removing weeds from Lake Detroit, Detroiters Association lakes.
They're not picking up weeds.
They're, they're not picking, I'm sorry, not picking up weeds, right. They're, they're never removing them. They're not picking them up from the, from the curbside. So they, they have a problem and they wanted to meet and see if they could solve the problem. Well, the Lake Detroiters, what they, Association, what they did, he, they wrote a letter to the city requesting that they allow people to use the city compost site off of Hillcrest Road. And they, and also in the letter, it's, it up, it stated to that if we extended our hours a little bit on our transfer station, that would help too for people to be able to bring their weeds there. So I was reporting back.
We don't take, I mean, we don't take weeds at the transfer station, that would be at a compost place.
Isn't there, isn't there a compost place in?
No, the compost is more around the city.
Oh, it's behind the.
East of the jail.
Yeah, so, yeah, I didn't think there was weeds in there either, but.
They got some, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, they're, they're worried about lake weeds, so.
That would be so sporadic, I don't know if the, and we just set our hours.
We just set, and I did, and I told them, we just set our hours last week, or last board meeting.
Stay open for extra time and pay people for.
Yeah.
But it's open Saturday mornings for anything.
Eight to noon, yeah, yeah. And so that's what I said, it's open, and then he, and they said, well, if they could go a couple more hours on Saturday and maybe open one a little bit later on one of the days of the week. I said, well, we just changed the hours. I don't know.
You know, I think you can bring your weeds to compost, so I think that's where they should be going anyway.
Well, what they, but, but what they want though, to make sure, there's a DNR person there too, they want to make sure that the weeds are not in the compost because it takes twenty-one days for them to sometimes dry out and be non-invasive. So they don't want to get them mixed together, if, if, so what would, what would have to happen is there has to be a separate place to put weeds and a separate place for the compost. And that's what they do right now with the city. And the Pelican watershed used to dump them in, I think it was Lakeview Township's.
There's lake weeds going in the compost all the time.
Yeah, I figured there would be.
All the time. So it's, it's kind of a hard one to control.
Yeah.
Well, maybe the, the compost should just, we should just make sure the compost stays, and ideally, ideally, you would compost it and eat it, so you'd kill all those. See if you could compost it.
Yeah, mostly, I'm just referring to the lake, it'd be won by my place. There's compost piles, there's still working, it had been piled there for over five years. They keep turning them.
Yeah.
So it's, in the heat all winter long, there's steam coming off, so I don't think.
Yeah, and I didn't think the.
Nobody's in there hauling it out within a few days.
No.
No.
You know, I, that might be something for committee to look at though, is, you know, adding some, some waste like from the grocery stores or to get that in some of those compost, because that heats it up a little bit better too, I think, and get made a little bit more.
And even the township could possibly, if they want to separate and put up a sign, lake weeds here.
Right.
Because they got signed pretty well, brush leaves, law or stuff like that, so.
I'm not even fighting, we'll get pictures.
I want to learn. I, yeah, they, and they also, his biggest concern, I forgot his name now, Brad Wimmer, I think, was the fact that for thirty years, they haven't had to remove their own, or dispose of their own weeds and now they need to.
We got spoiled for thirty years.
Spoiled for thirty years, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sally Melissa and the same thing, and they've done a few other things and they're lawn people or whatever, going to do it for them or.
There is a, there is a company that contracted probably, he thought it was thirty or forty people, but it was, it was not cheap.
No, it's not cheap. That's Miller Lawn Care.
Yep.
They did it last year.
They did it last year, but they're contracted through Pelican watershed because they still have that tax on everybody's property that live there. Okay, I got a couple more. So Transit, we, some of the, one of the things that we're going to talk about is on the agenda, so we won't go on that, but anyway, the rides from last year in April are up twelve percent, so that's good. And then Kevin also talked about that eighty percent of his rides are non-scheduled and twenty percent are scheduled. And he's, they're trying to get more scheduled rides because it saves money. So he's, they're working out ways to do that. They used to be about sixty, forty, I think he said, before COVID happened, so they're trying to get at least back to that. He said, then he knows there's going to be non-scheduled ones, but non-scheduled ones are the, scheduled ones are the ones that eliminate people driving empty, I guess.
Yeah, and one thing about Transit, I, sometimes we, you know, we just don't think of who, who are the, who is it serving and who.
Yeah.
I happened to run into Central Market and to get, grab a couple of things and I heard a elderly person call for the transit bus, you know, she was, she'd come out getting it from her groceries and, and she had a walking stick and, you know, and so you, you have to stop and think, this is keeping people in their homes, it's another,
Yeah.
Another thing that helps people stay in their homes as long as possible.
Yep.
To get that transportation to grocery or to.
Shopping equipment.
Yeah, so it's serving a, a need that's, that, it not only is good for the individuals, but it saves, saves money and, and people can see.
Look at Richard, we are aging community.
Short bus.
Yeah, the short bus, I rode that one when I was younger too, so.
So and then on, on May sixteenth, they're having a comprehensive review that is going to be done by RLS associates, and I don't know what RLS stands for, but it's, they're contracted through MNDOT, so they'll have a comprehensive review of the transit and so the, it'll, originally, they're going to do it in the morning and I think Kevin requested in the afternoon because he has to drive, because then he doesn't have enough drivers. The cost of their new bus has gone up, so that's got to get, they'll, then there's not really much that can be done, it has to be, it was, it's the one that was ordered over a year ago, isn't it, what he said, Pat?
About a year ago.
Yes, so it's just the way it goes. If we put it off and order a different one, then it's going to cost more, and we need the bus. And then the appraisal on the transit building is, is at sixty-five thousand and in order, when we, they have to pay eighty percent of that, or we do, I guess, within thirty days of exiting the transit building. And unfortunately, transit funds cannot pay that fifty-two thousand dollars. That was kind of, I think we knew that last time.
One of the things that was discussed on, on, on that, and if that goes to, it's on fairgrounds, so.
Yeah.
But if we, if we long-term look at moving extension over into that area or if Fair has some other area that they have, that building over on A Street next to the in-home lot can be sold.
Can be sold too, yeah.
There are, kind of look forward to moving off that camp area campus, and I think extension on the fairgrounds is, is just ideal for everyone.
Yeah, I would agree.
And in that transit building, there might be some remodel that would have to be done to, to accommodate the master gardeners and, and some of the more space, but then there's a lot of space for, for Fair to utilize in the area too, so.
There's probably discussion our board members on the Fair Committee should bring up for discussion.
Well, we, we keep talking about it, they're interested in it and they are interested in moving the extension in there.
Okay, that'd be great.
Because they want somebody there all the time and that, that's not a bad deal either, so yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I think we got to all remember that it, it's all a partnership, we all have to, you know, give and take a little bit on what we want, what we need, but I think, at the end of the day, I think both entities think the extension out there would be a really nice fit. And in a, I think in the, if Fair Board, you know, they were talking years ago that they might be building or, you know, another building or remodeling and maybe the, I mean, if the, if the extension moves into a different building, I don't, doesn't matter to me, but we want to, we want to make sure that we work together and, you know, you can, I know we had a good discussion that county, you know, County Board too, is if, if we have to pay rent, well then we, you know, it's that we're subsidizing, it's all give and take, it's all give and take, so we'll work it out. I, I think we're all, we're all on the same page, we want this fair to be successful, so.
Exactly.
That's, that's where we're at, so.
Yep, and then, so that goes into the Fair Board, Richard and I are at the Fair Board meeting. Anyway, the project four twelve, which is the one, the project that's going to paint the mural on the culvert, is Amy Sterns is kind of head, I don't know if she's in charge of it, but she's spearheading it. She talked to the Fair Board about getting permission for Thomas Dambo to scout out the land of the Fair Board area and make a troll. I don't know if anybody knows what I'm talking about, but.
A troll?
They're, they're big, huge wooden trolls, massive.
Did you have, keep a picture of those?
I have some photos, yeah.
And they showed us, she showed us photos.
Yeah, they're kind of interesting.
Yeah.
I want one.
Yeah, they're cool.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, she presented the NRM too then. And the goal of five, four twelve is to, you know, if they go down this road, because they're not exactly cheap, is to find spots for a group of, you know, different, you know, fairly close that people can bike to all of them in the area.
Seventy-five to a hundred thousand.
Find a ball?
Yeah.
A scavenger hunt type thing?
Yeah, I mean, no, they're, they're like fifteen feet tall.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I mean, they're.
Permanent.
Yeah, they, she said seventy-five to a hundred thousand each.
Yeah.
Oh.
Not dollars.
So I'm not getting one.
Richard did volunteer to post.
Yeah, and they, they thought it would make a good troll, maybe.
Royalties.
That's awesome.
Royalties.
And they, a couple more things, where they hired someone to be their commercial exhibit superintendent, so now they have a person, she, she's not, doesn't live, she doesn't live around here, but she do most of her stuff online, and so hopefully, they're trying to make, they're trying to generate more revenue and make it more accessible for the commercial exhibit area, which is in the, in the arena and then some other places on the fairgrounds during, during the fair.
One thing that's interesting about the murals though is, the one that was approved, wasn't that done, is not being organized by high school students?
Yeah.
Painted.
Painted, yeah, painted.
But, but the design too.
It could be, yeah.
I mean, the, I, I, I hope they, I hope they can get it to look like they, the preliminary picture, because it looks like they're hoping to make it look like you're walking through an underwater tunnel with, with an aquarium on top of you, so it's, it would, I don't know how you'd lighten that up, make that light enough to, to do it, but it looks pretty interesting.
No, and then also too, the four, they're going to be, do a lot of painting there, the four H groups have volunteered to paint bathrooms and garbage cans and other things, so they're just going to, the Fair Board is going to supply the paint and they'll do the work. Anything else on the Fair Board?
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know, so. Then, then Barry and I had a courthouse meeting, I have a whole bunch of meetings here. It's the Dave Meyer Show today. So anyway, so anyway, we talked, one of the things we talked about was maintenance. And one thing that was brought up was removing the old courthouse alley staircase back here. And using it for, we, we get about a couple parking spots out of there. Apparently, right now, it leaks a little bit in the wintertime or when it rains and then it's cold area, he says, runs in, so it's not, you know, really, so that's something to look at. Then there's.
That's, it's an unsecured entrance, so it's not, it's not ever open, and I don't know, it'd be tough to get out of it even, and, and fire code does not require.
Doesn't require, yeah.
Back in our day, we used to, that's where we went to, down to the museum, but there's nothing, it's not used any, anytime now, except for maintenance, if they have something they're wanting to carry in or out of there, but if it was sealed up and filled and, and covered over, it might be something that we look at on the road.
Yep.
Unless, unless someone had some real strong opinion on it, I don't, I don't, can't see why there wouldn't.
If it isn't sealed up, that's going to have to be like at least painted or something, it looks kind of.
Parking is a hot commodity.
Yeah, and the parking, yeah. Pat could have his own parking spot back there.
You know, and one of the long, long-term, long-term things was it, you know, what, when a long-term wish list is a Sallyport over in that area, and it might actually.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we, if, if that is some, I don't, I'm not real sold on that at this time, but, you know, maybe down the road, it's, it is, and.
And then, then we also found out that there's a window, exterior window that is covered up by a wall in the HR office. So they're going to figure out why that happened. I don't know exactly.
I don't ever remember that window. Where? Well, in, in the HR office, right down here.
Yeah.
I don't remember, I, I mean, when we remodeled it, it, I thought, I think it was covered over before we remodeled in ten. Because there was never a discussion about that window, I.
Yeah, that was, uh, what else I got? So there, we had some discussion about backup power in the courthouse and we kind of determined that we just need to see if we have enough for running whatever we need. And there's some possibilities where we could check out the, the current generator that's over there, that supplies the sheriff and a few places here. There is, it has enough ampage to do the whole courthouse, but might be really expensive to rerun lines and stuff. So another option was to put one back, hell, back here. Would, would be possible, or we, we kind of look and see what we actually need, if the power goes out and do we have enough, are we able to operate enough with what we have? So that was, that was part of that, anything else?
No, just with that, you know, there was projections last summer that there might be some brownouts or, and we didn't have any, so you know, you hate to spend a bunch of money without, on a problem that's not there, so. I don't, I think you kind of, I think you kind of hold off and see if, I mean, we can always.
Yeah.
But worst-case scenario, temporarily, I mean, if we see something that's going to be a week long, we can move people over temporarily into the sheriff's building, which is covered, it's just some of this building that's not, but I don't know that we're going to, I don't know that we're going to get to that point, I, I think power companies want to make money and they're going to, they're going to keep ahead of it, so.
And then we talked about the new highway support person, it needs to be a maintenance person, because it's easy to do maintenance and custodial work, but it's hard to do custodial work and maintenance, the other way around.
Yeah, you're, you're not, if you're hired as custodial, you don't have.
Not certified to be ma- maintenance.
Don't have the credentials probably either.
Yeah.
You're talking, somebody can look after the building mechanical stuff.
Yeah, correct. And also, the custodial work too.
Yes, needed.
And then with, the last thing I had was the assessors and recorders update on the digitizing of their digital project, about half of it's done, scanned. And I think about a third of it is filed, I think, too, or what, what was, I don't know, say filed, but whatever, whatever that means. And then IT, they're talking, we're going to talk about that and it's on our agenda too, so we'll, we'll let them talk about that.
Just to add on to a courthouse committee, we discussed the, discussed that what the rates are getting for prorating some of the, the trucking firms out of DMV. And what we found out is that we only get eleven dollars and, and some of our larger companies are doing a very good job in having everything in order locally. But what's happening is we're getting individuals from all over, even from the cities that call in and make appointment and take up, and then they, if they're not fully prepared, that can take four hours and there's commonplace that it does. So we make eleven dollars for, for four hours of work and so we're, we just, it was, we're just doing homework on it and seeing, there's a lot of counties that don't do those at all, now we want to do it for our residents, but can we say it has to be a five, you know, adjoining county or Becker County to do those, because I don't know, we're just, we're just discussing it and seeing what options there are and.
Because there are a lot of out of county people that come and do it, because a lot of counties don't do it.
They schedule and, and drive up for it, it's like.
Oh.
And, 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 and Lady of DMV said, Stacy, she said that if they're not prepared and have everything filled up correctly, then it takes, it could take up to. Then it takes, it could take up to hour to four hours, just to, cause they have to call the state and they gotta go on hold and then, so that's eleven bucks.
What prorating is, is you're prorating your miles in each state.
Yep.
And if you don't file that quarterly, then you've gotta go back and do the, I mean, so it's, it's significant record keeping that needs to be done and. Um, unfortunately, it's, it's, you know, us older people that aren't as tech savvy that, you know, cause you can do this online, but. It's those that need the help that, but it, I don't mind if it's Becker County individuals or even our surrounding counties, but then you. They're coming from all over and that's, that's, it's costing us money and I don't think our residents should be supplementing. Out of county people. But that's just discussion. The other discussion item is we're putting a phone in the bailiff's area, because there's people that. Some people wanna use phones and, um, at least that we're putting it inside and then allowing them to help. Um, to try to at least monitor long, you know, they can get long distance if they want to, but uh, try to monitor it a little bit, so. For the public. I think that's it in courthouse.
I, I also got, uh, I got two more and they're gonna be short. Um, Historical Society, we met, and they are pretty busy. They're sta- they're really got a lot of people coming in and out of the, of the museum, up, and their main level, or the main level is, is the science area. And about ninety percent of that is ready to go on up and running, so that's good. The only part they really don't have running right now is the exhibits. And then there's, they have to, they got everything there almost. There are three places that they still have stuff, they still have stuff in the old jail here. Um, they also have stuff in the uh, four H Quans that are at the fairgrounds, and then DL Newspapers just donated a bunch of old uh. Newspapers and they're still at the news, at the DL newspaper.
They're at the recycling area?
Yeah. So anyway, there's, so she's looking at, um, and in the future, hiring a, probably at least a full-time person. She's right, she was doing interviews as we, when we met, um, for part-time people that'll, and she needs part-time people also. The problem she's running into, into with full-time people is benefits. They can't really offer benefits, or they try to do some, so. I, I don't know there's a solution to that or not, but that's it, getting, it's getting to be really competitive. And try to find people that wanna work there and stay and not have any benefits is kind of a little, little harder, I guess. Last one I had was the DAC, and the only really new thing that happened there is Wendy Fritz is the new board member. She, I, I think, and everybody else on the board thinks she'll be doing excellent job, because she has worked with almost all of the people that are clients at the DAC. Cause she, she's, she's employed by the school district, and that, and that was her job was, was working with those when they were, when they were in high school. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
I can go, I have the, I, uh, last week attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Center, um, meeting. In that there was, their, their numbers are pretty stable, money budget to date, um, for twenty twenty-two is pretty good. They did request for permission for James, who is the, runs the juvenile center, for him to go to Georgetown University for, um. Sounds like a pretty top-notch schooling, um, collaboration to get in with some legislation stuff. So that he can have, we can, I should say, have a voice down at the state in a lot of legislation stuff coming, because. There was, has been a lot of legislation stuff coming through, um, the state this year that has potential effect. On the regionals, uh, or at the juvenile center. Um, they have asked for some funds to redo the gym floor. And it is become a safety issue, so that was approved, and then they also are. Wanting to consider a body scanner, because again, of some proposed legislation that's not passed, but sounds like it could likely pass with. No funding, of course, and where it's gonna change the way that they can do body searches on, on juveniles. So one thing that they are looking at is doing a body scanner, which of course is a very hefty price tag, I think it's. Like three hundred thousand dollars, cause it's similar to like what TSA used, so, um. That's to be determined, so. That's the West Central, otherwise I just had finding commission. Where we will be voting on next week, and then we had the benefits committee with the employees last week, which I think was a good turnout and. I look forward to continuing it.
The, the body scanner, you know, that, while it's very expensive, it will have other benefits too, I mean, the safety of the employees will be. Enhanced, because they won't have to, I mean, if you're trying to find needles and knives and it's, it's. Dangerous for them too, cause you don't know what's on those.
Yep.
Um, so that's, that, I'm sure the staff would probably be very appreciative of that, but.
Yeah, there wa- there was mixed feelings among the advisory committee, just cause, you know, there's a lot of radiation for staff. And for the juveniles, um, so, I mean, I think.
I didn't think about radiation.
Yeah, I think, I think the, what it's gonna come down to is if this legislation passes, and then. There's potential of, you know, maybe two years from now, some funding could come with it, but. It's just to be continued to see with the legislation.
And then on the, um, benefits committee, we had a very good meeting, very, very good turnout. And I'll just read some of the things, we went around the room and, and explained some of the things that were of concern and, and, um. For the most part, I would say it was the family insurance. Now, most people don't get family insurance, but then we, we talked and. There'd be probably more that would take it if it was offered at a reasonable price, but our family insurance right now is, um, not, where, we can't. It's something we have to figure out some better solution. Um, the other thing is transparency and, and benefits, 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 uh. Obviously on the benefit committee, that would be the topic, but, um, I think the, I think the thought was that there's better. Better options and we, we, I think the committee, some of the committee members thought that we passed on better options in the past, so, um, I think we have to. Um, address that, make sure that we are transparent and make sure this committee sees, you know, can compare. Kinda the, as closely as possible, apples to apples, now everything's different and, um. But the other, the strongest thing was the family, we have to do something with family numbers, so. Um, the question was, can we, do we give and take, or is that just, so? But it was very, very good, we're gonna, we've decided that we, now we have to meet sooner than later on this, be- because of the. Time schedule, um, but as we move on, now probably next year, if we can get a, you know, get a way ahead of this and get a three-year contract, the benefits committee will be. Kinda in limbo for, you know, once a year maybe just to touch base, but right now, we're gonna have to have a couple meetings.
And we talked about sending surveys out to employees to kinda rank what is most important to them in insurance, whether it's premiums. Deductible medications, so that will help us when we go to look at a broker.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was good. Pat, do you have anything to add to that committee? It was very.
I think you both covered it very well. We had eighteen people that attended and, uh, representative for each bargaining unit and then also. Non-bargaining individuals, both supervisors and non-supervisors, so we had a very diverse group of individuals that were at that table.
And then, uh, let's see, the only other committee that I had. Um, we had NRM, uh, Rich and I had NRM, um, discuss, we have Bucks Mills coming before us today to do the fence and, but. That's moving forward. Um, I know Nate's interested in, in looking at, um, the, how, what the timeline is at, so maybe is. It's when Steve comes in, we can have him talk about that a little bit more. I think we've touched on everything else and. But a tower lease that, that we passed a few years ago and they never did get that Verizon Tower up and we're still open to, open to that.
On one thirteen?
Yes, I think it's on one thirteen. Section three of Forest Township on East Bad Medicine Road, north of State Highway one oh three. Or one thirteen, excuse me. And then the only other thing on that was, is Mitch was talking about another full-time staff person. Um, for next year, he's got a part-time this, this summer. Um, we explained to him that, you know, he can show some revenue to offset some of that expense. That we'd be more than open to looking at it. Uh, I think so he's, he's putting that together. He showed comparisons to other counties on, on how much timber, land, acres they monitor and, and we are. The lowest of that, for, for the timber acres that we monitor, so. Anything else to add to?
No, just, just that, and there is a lot of popple standing there that we, you know, and it, it needs to come down or it's not gonna be any good, so. Um, that, that probably is important there, and then that, they figured that tram would be ready by Memorial Day.
Kiss her out, did some work on it here last week and. Donations are going well.
Ice is coming off the smaller lakes, so that wind yesterday, a couple.
It's gonna, Sally's gonna beat last year's date.
Beat it?
Uh, it was a fifth or sixth last year. It'll be a day or so, it'll be off.
Yeah. Does the ice have to be off, there, there's, there's no ice where the tram is going to, is there?
No, that's clear.
No, and then we did have that Amy Sterns, we had her at the fair and then we had her at the NRM too, so more trolls.
Yep. And they are, they're interesting. Um, said the individual that does it is from over. Where was that? Denmark. Denmark, yeah.
So is that gonna be similar to like the fish, where you have, you know, different areas have the fish in town here that you can go look at it and.
Except for these are gonna be off the main, you're gonna have to get off the main. Road or trail or whatever, he's gonna put them off, so.
And I think they want it on public land, so it's all.
Sounds pretty cool.
I'll get Christian Nelson, I'll get those photos and I'll forward it to the board so they can appreciate it. These are gigantic.
They're huge.
And they look like, they look like they're all formed with shakes then, so it's all, you know, like a shake roof, you know, so the, it's all formed with shakes, the body arms and.
Well, they make the head over there in Denmark, and they fly them over and then the rest is made out of pallets.
Yep.
Yeah.
Little tourism thing.
It is, that's.
I'll run through mine quick, uh, in terms of time, we're running a little late. I attended the airport conference last week and I think the biggest thing I came away there is the, with the new runway and taxiway and all that stuff out there. Is to really do runway inspections. Or preventative maintenance and get it on the CIP program, so it's paid for majority of it by the state and the feds. And not letting it go till it's cracked, crack filling and some type of seal coating on it. At Prairie Lakes, Minnesota, solid waste, Becker County still has a, about a five hundred plus ton overage. Clay County is still sh- short about eleven hundred tons, but they're gonna be equaling that out and. The big thing they wanna deal with this summer is wet loads. And they're gonna monitor those a little closer, they do, don't wanna take real wet loads coming in, it creates a lot of hazards for them, so. Uh, probably, if you get wet loads, they'll probably have to end up sending it to a landfill someplace.
What, what constitutes a wet load? I mean, how does?
It could, load could sit outside uncovered in the rain. While the transfer trailers aren't covered, so it's just a monitoring that they're gonna try to do, because it's, you get a. Water running out of a load coming in, it creates a lot of problems with incinerators, so. And.
So when they dump, then the water just drains is where the problem is.
I don't even know if they have a drain.
I mean, it drains on the back of the truck and.
So, it's been an issue and they're trying to, a lot of time it's a direct haul ones, they come directly there. Might be from Becker County, might be from one of the other counties, but there's the issue ones and. I think transfer out here is to try to monitor and, um, probably keep their covers up, they got trailer parked outside before it goes, so.
But it's not local, it's not the individual haulers then?
No, it's, it's the commercial haulers. Still the issue or the discussion continues on ash disposal, our June meeting will be held in the Hoff and just kinda tour their. Ash recovery process where they actually refine it, store it, and use in road projects. And it's, it's worked very well. For our Pelican River watershed, is discussion continues on having another stakeholder meeting like they did. And basically how things can probably be more friendly users far as permitting and working better and. Not relaxing probably any of the policies, but probably misogyn them a little bit instead of a Cadillac version of. A lesser version could, could work, so. More to come on that, and along with that is how all LGUs can share. Info and promer- permits work together, communication back and forth between our zoning, watersheds, Corment watershed. And there, there's even some software that we should probably all on board with, so I think our zoning has it. Pelican River has it, Corment didn't have it, but they're gonna try to get updated on that, so they can share information. And it does, overall, it would probably help cut each other's work, that's why duplicate things, so. More on that, I think they're gonna have another meeting coming up here next month. Let's see, Richard and I had highway, most of it's on the agenda, one thing I'll add is, there's a request to vacate the. Kind of a dead end portion, some right away out on one thirty-one, which is kinda the east side. Of Big Floyd Lake, kinda behind the old Ironman, it's kind of a little T-shaped piece that goes up. And it's actually a private driveway and. Basically, basically the landlord requested, so he'd be putting the. Bill and a survey and attorney would work on it, bring it forward, so. And just for discussion at this time. So I have.
I forgot too that, um, we had our tribal relations. Meeting yesterday with White Earth. We discussed, of course, the, the feedlot, um, you know, they're, they discussed the concerns that they have with the feedlot. Uh, we discussed cannabis legal, legalizing, that that's, you know, potentially coming forward in the legislation. And then just different collaboration opportunities that we could have with the, the tribe and us, whether it's. Um, there was discussion with, um, how our sheriff's department and jail could work together, some economic development opportunities. So we are agreed to meet quarterly, so we'll continue to have those meetings.
Could, could we in, in the future, if you have them now, um, could you send out like the minutes or the, just the, kinda the topics? Well, and then the discussion on where, how we're going to, um, what, what we're thinking, you know, just so we're, so the full board's kinda on the same page. Or sees the direction that we're looking at going, so.
Yeah, I threw out too, a kind of for further thought, just how we could work together, probably. On, uh, transportation or highways and stuff like that, and in the past, I had a pretty good working relationship, actually. During the winter, start a truck there and work very well back and forth with them, so. Just improve winter safety and services up there.
I think our departments do work together quite well, and, and I think human services is one that has a lot of interactions that we're probably not even, I mean, we don't. And, we don't fully know how much we're cooperating already, so. Hopefully expand on, on those things that are working and, and improve those things that, that could be, um, done better, I guess.
They did extend the invitation again for tomorrow at their tribal, annual tribal, annual meeting, whatever they call it.
State of the nation? I think that's what it's called.
Yeah, and we have highway again and. And leading, segueing into that, we did have a public works meeting again and, um, I think everything's going on right on task. I asked Jim, um, about open houses and, and, and we're moving forward, we're getting close to, closer to that. Wrapping up, uh, you know, thanks to Judy and to, to Brent for coming out there and, you know, just to tying everything together now, uh, towards the end. We have a very nice meeting room and I, we're, we're, we decided probably just two TVs to start with in that big, you know, it's set up for four. But looking at two big TVs for, and I think Teams meetings out there with the new technology might be, might work better than here even, so. And then the break room's right attached, so if you need a bigger room, you can take the wall down, and if you need a smaller room, you can. Other than that, I think we covered courthouse and NRM and. Only other thing, um, had soil and water and kinda the point of interest there is they're partnering with Corment Lakes Watershed to, to. So Corment Lakes Watershed wants to hire or contract with them to provide an administrative service, so. Corment Lakes Watershed doesn't have any full-time staff, so they kinda want someone, a number that people can call, because currently the, the. The board members are doing so much work, I mean, they, there's a couple board members that are working an awful lot of hours, so they kinda want someone. working an awful lot of hours, so they kind of want someone that to take that place and um, and they are funding that, so that's a partnership that they're they're working with. And if you bought trees, you were supposed to pick them up on Friday, hopefully everyone got them in the ground and and get them some water on. Anything else under? Um. Reports correspondence. Any meetings coming up that? Besides your leadership meeting?
The AMC, yep.
If there's a there's a leadership school for newer newer.
Yeah, it's called like difficult conversations or something like that, there's um, when we went down to the new commissioner training, there was one of the keynote speakers was, and I don't remember it, it's how to how to have bipartisan conversations with um, because we've become so polarized kind of in our country and that's the person that is putting on the training in May.
I would uh, annotate a motion to authorize those commissioners that are interested in going to that AMC meeting to to be able to go and and with per diem. Is motion by John, I'll second any discussion. And this extends to anyone, you know, if there's room for anyone else that wants to go, um.
It's May twenty-fourth.
But it's, I think it's designed more for the new commissioners. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries, and I think the date was May twenty-fourth.
May twenty-fourth, yep, in Staples.
So it's very, very close to. Anything else under reports correspondence? Okay, any appointments? I know there's a couple of appointments for the Pelican Watershed, I think we can wait till next board meeting to make that appointment.
Yeah, and there'll be Airport Commission coming up and I think this go around, the county appoints three.
Do we do we need to advertise? Might wanna check.
The 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 two appointments for this Pelican, we have advertised, we are.
No, 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 the airport.
Well, the airport, I'm not sure if we advertised in the past, it's just hopefully try to find somebody who has probably a little.
Maybe put it on our website at least.
That'd be okay, I imagine I'd be reappointed as one. And then I gotta get hold of Mr. Sherbrooke and see if he's to serve another go around and we got one that's leaving Howard.
Is what?
Howard House is leaving.
So we're looking for one and take recommendations from the city?
One new one probably, or possibly two if Dave Sherbrooke doesn't wanna serve again.
And if you're familiar with, the city has term limits, so that's why sometimes it it gets county appointment, it's kind of kind of silly, we don't have term limits, um, city gets um, asking county appointments to reach a term. Okay, if there's no appointments, we will probably address at our next meeting, the Pelican River Watershed appointments, uh, we've got some support um, sent to us for for the current members, so um, at this time I don't see any other names come forward other than the reappearance.
Okay, yep.
Okay, um. County Ministry on to reports.
Yes, this will be very quickly, uh, we already talked about the community-based comprehensive plan that'll be due May fifteenth. Uh, project four twelve contract, you you saw it at the previous board meeting, we're just taking a little time bit of time to go through it. It'll be on the agenda for May sixteenth for your consideration. Uh, Sunnyside RFP, there is a um, a preliminary meeting with interested vendors that wanted to submit the RFP, we had two that came to that meeting, it was here in the boardroom. Um, it was attended by um, Ashley McNally and Katie Landmark and myself and lasted about forty-five minutes and again, it gave them the opportunity to ask additional questions and follow-up questions. And of course, there's another two weeks before the due date is to submit that RFP. Uh, work from home, um, I'll be bringing with summary of all the department's viewpoints, they I've asked them to reach out to their employees, get good feedback, as you know, we have a sunset a clause in the motion for work from home policy for July fifth. My plan was after I review the summary with the department, it's at a departmented committee, my plan is to bring uh, that information along with some recommendations to the board on the sixteenth and that's all I have.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, um. Pardon me? Transit, Kevin, absolute move, Kevin.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary. You have a altered uh, resolution or a change resolution in front of you that was handed out, we handed that out?
We handed the update. It's not given the application.
And as you notice, Kevin has to get moving on a bus, he's probably got it parked in the loading zone out here. But the discussion at finance was, let's see if who's applying for the, I mean, and we we might even be back at our next board meeting to ask for that second one depending upon if there's how the vacancies turn, so, but right now we think immediately we'll put the advertisement out for one and we might actually out of that same pool, can we word that so that we could take more than one if needed? Um, if if at our next board meeting, we approve the second one if. So should we make that, do we make this a pool? Kind of for a template? I think that's probably how we should do it, in case we want to hire more than one person out of this this round, you know, and the next board meeting. So that was a discussion, let's get to one and and you don't know who's applying and internal or external type things.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve one A.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, Kevin, just to just to thank you, cause Kevin's putting in a lot of hours and and trying to keep keep uh, rides going and and uh, so that those hours that we owe him are, it'll be, you know, we'll save those as we get drivers. Thanks again.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Good morning, the first item that I have through finance is requesting a motion to approve regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days.
Move to approve.
Motion by John?
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries.
Um, the next item I have is I have two licenses, a gambling permit, resolution five twenty-three two B or one B, Humane Society for a raffle on June tenth at Seven Sisters in Lakeview Township.
Move one B.
Motion by John to approve one B.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries. And what was the next resolution or is it?
Nope, it's a it's adding a liquor license.
Okay.
Combination on off sale with Sundays for Charlie's Place at Highland Land Township.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hey, motion by Erica, second by Dave, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
And the final item I have is accepting the March cash comparisons, sales tax and investment reports.
Mary, I looked at it for year to year on the on the sales tax, but how how is it comparing to pre-COVID? Are we still moving ahead? Are we getting?
Currently we are, yes. For this is the March report, which actually was received in February because they go back.
Yeah.
You'll have last year's comparison, but yeah, if you want, I can send you something.
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm just letting you know, sales, I mean, sales are still climbing, but um, as we move forward, prices are increasing, so it's not reflective on price, so.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion by John to accept the reports?
Second.
Second by Richard, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Denise.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Morning, Denise.
Good morning.
I have the quarter one two thousand twenty-three board reports for your review and acceptance, if you would please.
Do you have anything to report that looks that catches your eye or unusual in in your reports? Any 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 significant increases in services or?
I think they have there's been a decline in referrals for the pregnant using moms, but an increase in children's and adult mental health, certainly, um. There are a couple issues in another in um, in another department, adult services, of course, adult um, protection and um, you know, seniors, senior work is up beca- just because that's the population and that's not going away, but then there are other areas that are going down a little bit, so it's it's pretty even.
A little ebb and flow.
Yeah.
Um, and just just a point, um, Denise is now on the Lakeland Middle, are you, you're on the board as a as your professional group?
Regional Director, yep.
So, so we have another board member there, um, we went out to eat after and it was very, very good discussion, sat with some actually sat with someone from Detroit Lakes, he's works, um, Mr. Larson.
Okay.
So. So any other questions or entertain a motion to accept, to approve the reports? Accept or approve? Accept?
Accept, I think, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion by Erica, second by Dave and it is you're you're saying A through G, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, A through G, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed motion carries.
Lastly are the claims for human services, public health and transit.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims for human service, public health and transit.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Erica to approve the reports, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Motion carries.
That was.
Question for you?
Oh, the off the agenda.
Oh, did, we were just clarifying the the minutes from the last meeting on a couple amendments and how to how to phrase those. We should just have a little bit more detail on how in the minutes, um, maybe you couldn't touch base just to.
Yep, absolutely, we can do that.
Just to clarify, maybe how to identify that a little bit better, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Here. I didn't see you in here behind the pole. I was like, oh, maybe we'll have to skip.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll make it quick because I know we have a work session at the end, so. Um, first thing I just would like to advise the board of is that I've been speaking with Matt Erickson and are a veteran service officer and he will he will be getting orders towards the end of the year for deployment uh, for approximately one year, so um, the county administrator and myself have been uh, speaking with Matt about staffing uh, what to do in the interim, so I just want to bring that to your attention, we don't know exactly the dates obviously until he gets his final orders, but I did want to make the board aware of that.
I think you want to make sure that we stress our support for Matt and his in his time and his family.
Absolutely.
Um, this is not, nobody, I'm sure these, I'm sure everyone expects or can expect that, but sometimes it's it's tough to tough to leave home, that's um, so we will give him our best and and work work through it.
Yes, thank you, I'm sure he'll appreciate that, um, as well as that, um, just uh, the again, just a little bit more detail as far as what we're discussing, I know he wanted me to impress upon the board as well that it's fairly critical in his mind to continue to staff this office here and Heidi is relatively new, but that really, uh, the work that they're doing, um, you know, really does take two people, so again, we're looking at options, I know Pat is uh, reaching out to the state and just really looking to see what our best options are to ensure that uh, the veterans in the community continue to receive the services that they need.
I'm sure they'll have a real good support system for an officer that's deployed vacating that for temporarily, so.
So the second item I have um, is I I know as a board we you had approved the uh, bereavement policy previously and there had been a few adjustments to that as we uh, worked through negotiations with the different you uh, unit, unit, unions, sorry, I can't speak. Um, and just wanted to ensure that I had the language and the approval uh, from the board because it has been um, adjusted a few different times. So I know I sent Peggy, uh, sorry to put Peggy on the spot here, I sent you a new email um, and just wanted to pull it up on the screen if I may, there's just one word in there to include uh, legal wards, actually some of the language in some of the that says legal legal guardian, but I did change it to legal ward, didn't really make a lot of sense to have legal guardian because the legal guardian is the person that would be taking the leave, so I would ask that um, if you're okay with that, that is how I would modify it to include legal wards that people would also have the ability to take uh, the bereavement leave if they had a legal ward that they were responsible for. And this is consistent with what we are placing and putting in a lot of the union contracts as well.
Okay, so you want to replace the word guardian with ward?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um. Entertain a motion to amend the bereavement policy to change that word?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by David, second by Erica, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So and and just a final note about the bereavement policy, there's it's been a work in progress as we've adjusted through the negotiations, so I've been trying to keep up on the changes just to uh, uniformly have it uh, consist consistent across unions as well as in our policy as well.
Thank you.
Um, so that's all I have until uh, till the end.
Did we? Do that boiler, where did that boiler go?
That'll be at the end, Commissioner.
It's under me.
Oh, he's on the, yeah, I was thinking.
Yeah, I haven't spoken to Brent, so if I. Yeah, so I will double check and if not, I will come back and and address that, thank you.
Sure.
Chris, I was gonna say one thing just about the the CBSO is um, I think the board's decision to um, add an ACV SO is is really critical here because as you know, an ACV SO can do all the work a CV is so good and in previous years, we just didn't have that ability. Um, when we did not have a CV SO uh, last year, the state was able to come in and do that work, so we're gonna be bringing recommendations not only either to have a state presence or other county presence or maybe even a temporary employee, but so we're gonna have a few options that we're gonna put before you at the future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First item I have this morning is a approval request for an ATV insert. It would be used for medical.
This is not it.
Emergency purposes. Uh, the one we are requesting is from Kim Tech and it should be in your packet for four thousand nine hundred seventy-five, forty-five hundred approximately would be used to our ATV grant.
Okay, so we do have about forty-five hundred left in our grant and then the extra five hundred dollars, um, we'll find out, find somewhere in the.
In my budget.
Within the budget.
Correct.
We can probably squeak five hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars out somewhere.
Yeah.
So.
Move to approve the expenditure of the server for forty-nine seventy-five.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries.
Item number two A, uh, resolution five twenty-three one C. Uh, we have been in need of a.
Can can we do the the other one first?
Oh, sure.
So we'll we'll probably take a few minutes after the team team grant.
Okay.
For pictures and.
Item two B is a uh, grant for the remote electronic alcohol monitoring. Uh, we are gonna receive eight thousand in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which starts July first and fiscal year twenty twenty-five, eight thousand each year, so I'm looking for approval.
Move one D.
I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Dave, and this does not cover our expense, but it it helps with itself.
Offsets it a little bit, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item number two A, and I would like to uh, have Mr. Brolin up here, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So a few weeks ago, uh, my staff reached out to uh, the team foundation, Team Industries. We have been in need of a uh, a newer uh, rescue sled. Uh, rescue sled for snowmobiles, trailer, it can be switched over uh, in the summertime to use with ATVs. It is uh, that particular unit has been around since uh, I guess we don't know the exact time, but it it's quite old, rusty. Um, not as uh, soft as it used to be. When we uh, haul people out, they get sprayed with snow and and mud and such, so uh, we reached out to uh, team. Team and again, thanks to my staff, uh, a, a grant request was put in and I got a call a few weeks later saying that we got the full amount. And with me today is, uh, Andy Broan, pronouncing that right, from the Team Foundation, and I'll let him explain a little more about the Team Foundation.
Uh, the Team Foundation was started in, uh, late nineties, early two thousands as a way to get back to the communities that, uh, our teen plants are in. Um, so we have, we help the Bagley community, the county there, sheriff, uh, police department, same with the Audubon Detroit Lakes locations and the Cambridge locations. All are, are local communities we help, um, donate to and provide funding for various different types of things, mainly a lot of education, um, a lot of tech type stuff, robotics, um, and then funding projects for police departments, sheriffs, such as that nature, so.
Well, thank you. And I, you know, Team's support in the community has just been outstanding. I'm, I'm, my wife's in the, uh, council at Lake Park Audubon School District and, uh, we're very active. We have three kids in there and, and Team is always stepping up to the plate and supporting our schools and, and our law enforcement. So, uh, thank you to Team and thank you to you, Andy, that, um, for doing this. It's, it's remarkable that we have such great companies in our community. So, um, we do have a picture of it too. Uh, uh, so if, if you want to pass it around, we'll pass that around to the, the press back there. But, um, as you can see, these have suspension. I don't think the nineteen-twelve one that we currently have has much for suspension. So, um, this will be a night, much more pleasant ride if you're, especially if you're, um, yeah, been hurt in some sort of accident.
I, I did do, uh, some research on the internet. It's the most advanced remote rescue unit available on the market today. Superior gas shock suspension and cushioned hitch adds to the, you know, it, the care of the, uh, person that we're responding to.
Right.
So. All right, well, I want to thank you very much. And if we can get a photo, please?
Yes.
How about if I mentioned the amount? The amount was eleven thousand eight thirty-six.
I'll go first.
You'll go first.
I'll go first. Yeah.
I want to go, I want several one.
That's fine.
All of you guys giving their phones.
Look at that. I can see all your faces. That's great.
Oh, you got yours? You got yours, newspaper? Yeah. This is, this is broadcast. This is how we do radio right here. Yes. Oh, one more, one more. Happy faces. Yes.
Yeah. Some tables up here in our office too again.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, um, the House clean. Thank you for reminding us to. We need to make a motion to accept the donation from Team in, in the amount of eleven thousand eight thirty-six for purchase of this. No, we'll, boom, sec. Motion by John?
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I wonder if they have to get additional trailer or no?
Is that, is that actually the resolution one C that we were supposed to?
Yes, one C.
One, one C.
Yep, okay.
That's acceptable, everybody. That one C.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Steve?
Good morning, Commissioner, uh, board members, Pat, Peggy. I got three items today to present to the board. The first one is a purchase of a new compactor truck from, uh, Olympic Sales in Fargo. Uh, it's a, it's a unit that's ready to go. We had, we need to replace a two thousand and ten model. That was the first one that we originally bought. And, uh, they gave us a price. It's priced through a source well for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. So normally when we, we solicited different vendors and they're going to be out anywhere from probably eight to twelve months, six to twelve months probably as a minimum. If you had to order a new one and get it built, this one's built and it's ready to go. So.
And your committee recommended to approve?
The committee recommended to pursue this.
And went through finance. Um, when I first saw this, I looked at it and I thought, well, two thousand and ten, that's not very old. And I started doing, that's thirteen years old and I don't know how many miles or hours. I guess hours are probably more accurate on a.
Yes, there's a, you know, I didn't even know that. I, I don't have that with me, but it's, it's been rebuilt a couple of times and, or at least once and, uh.
Yeah, and we're having trouble with them now.
Yeah.
And our second one is a twelve.
Two thousand and twelve is, is a second one, but this is, this truck that we're looking at is the same version as that two thousand and twelve model that we purchased from this, this business.
One thing we did, uh, Jim was at finance and we wanted to probably in the future look at trying to keep the same, um, chassis for, for working, you know, if we're going to work on them in the, in the, um, Public Works Building, so. We did talk a little bit on, on, I think it was more transit of, of, of battery powered, but, um, I think when we started in technology, I remember when Brian Berg was here, um, we always wanted to be second generation technology. And I think we're still in first generation and battery powered, um, bigger vehicles. So, uh, maybe in the future we look at that, but at this time we're not, um, interested in. The transit was probably more so because there are some areas doing that. So entertain a motion to approve the capital purchase request of three twenty-nine five hundred or which, which one is it? Three?
Three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine for two, two thousand twenty-three Peterborough compact truck for three twenty-nine five hundred.
Move to approve.
Sorry, Ken.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is, uh, approve, uh, quote to install a fence at the Bucks Mills project. Uh, we got two quotes. Uh, the low quote was eighteen thousand one hundred twenty-five to put up a six-foot-high chain link galvanized fence. It's five hundred and seventy feet long. It'll be the boundary fence between, uh, the property that we're purchasing and, well, the land that we're, we're going to have, so. Do you have any questions?
No, and, and this was one of the, this is probably the, this is county expense.
This is.
Um, we are going to be reimbursed for the purchase of the property from the state via our grant that we, that we will receive. And the next phase of the project, we anticipate the dam removal. That's kind of funny, but, uh, the removal of the dam is, is, um, going to be a grant process through the state. And the DNR is pushing us to do this because it's, it's on their top priority list. So, um, we anticipate that, that going through. Um, the reroute of the, the stream bed is going to be, um, very interesting and, and very kind of, it's going to be an intu- um, educational for how they, because they're going to place stones specifically engineered to only allow the same amount of water flow as the dam slowing. So it's not going to lower or raise any water tables than, than it would, as it currently sits. Um, and with the route they're looking at, remember when Nicholas was presenting that, it's a long channel that, that kind of winds on the south side of the road that will, that'll be ideal sturgeon nesting areas is what we were told. Is that how you remember it, John?
Yeah, on the, on the dam site, it'll be put back in the original channel.
Right.
Because when they put that structure in, they moved it, I want to say northwesterly. So way out of the, you can see where all, the old bed is. So they're going to reroute it down that and follow that probably all the way to into, um, Melpon.
Yeah.
And there's other fish that need to get upstream also that we've cut off by doing that.
Oh, yeah. It's just the walleyes.
Yeah.
All of them, they just can't navigate up there.
Right.
And in the past, people were actually just trespassing on the stream bank. So now we can.
Um, Mr. Chair, is this something that, would you want the DNR to come and present? Again, we have some new board members, just to update them on this project as they get, you know, start to finalize this?
As, as we approach the request for the, the big project, I think, I think the public, we should have another, um, pretty good presentation because, uh, Nick, Nicholas is a very good speaker and he will get you fired up about this project. It, it is, it is kind of exciting. Jerry, remember?
Lot of detail.
Yeah. Jerry?
Chair, for those with, uh, tender ears, how about calling it that, the math water forming?
We don't want to offend anyone, so the, the, the concrete barrier is, is going to be removed, which was originally referred to as a dam. We won't get into the pronouns of the, of the dam.
This with Bucks Mills Dam.
Water retention.
Finding interest, that little, I don't know if it's out there, but that little cafe used to be, uh, Dams, Best Dam Site.
Um, yeah, that used to be a, uh, a, a bar. I remember being in that a couple of times, but.
Bar and get shorter food over there soon.
And do you remember, do you remember who owns on that, on the north side, right below that? Is that, is that all private property or I know the DNR has access, but is that, I don't remember the ownership on that side. Do you remember, Steve?
No, not a, I'm ahead.
Okay, where the, where the lines are in that. I'm sure the DNR maybe owns the stream bank maybe, but I know they have, they have to cross private property. So, uh, we want to be respectful of private property out there. Um, so we, we, um, encourage people if they want to go, go on now the side that the county is purchasing, uh, because there was a lot of trespass concerns over their property.
So. Fence will help alleviate the.
Yeah, the.
Border a little bit.
We met with the owner and they were very, this was, this was an absolute, this was absolute. They, they were, and they've been, a lot of people, and they, they end up, some people, and especially when it's county brought, now they want to even camp, you know, out there, which with, I don't know that we need campers out there in this because it's such a small site and, um, at this time, but they were worried that, that would grow into that. And with this, it will. Um, we even talked about maybe possibly leaving a lower area for, but, um, th- this is what they wanted and we, we, we agreed. So. So entertain a motion to accept the low quote and move forward with the fence?
Someone, second.
Motion by John, second by Richard. And we, this won't be put up till the, till it is finalized, until the, till the purchase is.
Till the purchase.
Is, is closed. So, but then it'll go in as soon as possible after that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Uh, the last thing is, uh.
Oh, yeah, we got.
Oh, all those in, didn't we, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I'm ahead of myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing is review and approve a new service contract from Potty Shacks or, uh, we have ifees at various sites. We're adding one at the Osage Swimming Beach and the East Highland Access. Otherwise, the rates are the same as they've been when we first entered into contract with, uh, Potty Shacks, well, four years ago. They haven't changed them, so.
I think it's key to note that, uh, we're putting one out at the Osage site and, and we have to find the appropriate spot for it out there. That's going to be kind of, Jerry knows that that's pretty tough, tough flat, no, not much flat ground on that, but we'll have to figure something out.
Yeah, correct.
But it'll be a nice addition out there and, and hopefully we can enhance that even more. So entertain a motion for the Potty Shack agreement?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Any questions on any?
Thank you, Steve. Jim?
Morning Commissioners, uh, Highway has a few capital purchase requests, uh, for your consideration. Uh, first one is, um, First one is so purchase of shelving and materials for the shelves. This will outfit the new Public Works Building in our parts room and our equipment repair room. We looked at a couple of different places and we found the the shelves that we liked that were sturdy and strong. It was from Dry State Surplus Company out of Big Lake, Minnesota. We're asking for approval of seventy seven thousand dollars shelving from the vendor costs sixty six or seventy seven hundred dollars, excuse me.
I'm going to get the shelving business.
The framing from the shelving rep cost approximately sixty seven hundred dollars. And then we're looking for additional thousand dollars to put the quality shelving material, the sanded plywood for it.
Entertain a motion to approve up to seventy seven hundred dollars for the shelving and shelving material would be separate. Motion by Richard.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next request is for lab testing equipment for our materials lab. This is used in testing aggregate materials that's placed in the road. We have a quote from, there's only usually this one vendor that we have, but it's for twenty one hundred seventy five dollars. For an aggregate splitter and wash machine.
Entertain a motion to approve seven twenty twenty one seventy five plus any shipping and handling and taxes.
Move.
Motion by John, second by Richard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And your snow blower.
And the snow blower, this is a request for purchasing in the two thousand and twenty four budget cycle. It's just such a long lead timer, asking for approval now, and then we'll pay for that in two thousand and twenty four when it arrives.
Okay, the amount is sixteen sixteen thousand five seventy seven and the Schulte three point snow blower.
So move.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Richard. And this is traditionally a year, a rear mount, but it can be used on the front mount of the directional machine. Schulte is a heavier, heavier brand, I think, than the Select that we're. Do you want the Select to be auctioned? Are you keeping that one, the Select snow blower?
Uh, I guess if you approve disposal of it, yeah. I don't know that we have decided yet, but it is old and we're out. I don't know if we'll get much money, but I think we would like to put it on auction, yeah.
We can wait for the list that to come on the big auction that we have.
We can do that as well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and all those in favor of the motions enter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That's one thing we discussed too, is when we do the move, that we're going to have a pretty good significant amount of items and ask all department heads to look to to bring anything, Brett, maybe furniture or stuff to, because it's going to be a pretty significant amount of items. And and when you get that much interest, that maybe we can get a little bit more money for them when we when we get rid, clean house here. But when we move, there will be a lot of things that would be on the on the auction.
Final item, just a brief discussion, wanted to bring this. We're looking at building dedication plaques at the new highway building. And I believe the sheriff has been looking at some too, because the jail, I think, was missed at that time. But we just had conversations on who we should acknowledge on that. You know, this has come through different periods of board members and that. And I think our discussion was kind of appropriate to maybe have those members that were involved at the final approval and kickoff of it, but it's your discussion on that. For highway, this was approved now over a year ago. We've had some transition of board members and administrators and such. The jail, obviously, too, they will have their conversation, but there was different members during those board periods time too. And we're kind of working on our designs there with the trophy shop. And I just gave you a couple examples there to kind of see what we were we're thinking. We haven't developed anything final for the highway department, but we thought we would like you to know about that. And if you had any input on it, we're open to listening on that.
My thoughts is is the staff and the board members that were on board when the decision was made probably two years ago on moving forward. I looked at all the other plaques and around and pretty much that way.
For my reference in the the Human Service Building, when I came on, that was being built and but it was finished when I was Commissioner. And and I did not, I, my name's not on it. It was, I wasn't involved in the decision making. And Mr. Mr. Berg at the time asked me, we, so we want to, you know, if there's a strong feeling one way or the other, it it, we certainly want to accommodate, but it's it's, that's, that's, that's the only past history that we probably have. Otherwise, I think everything's, I mean, of changeover at the time of construction to finish. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge you and ask your opinion.
No, I'm I'm totally on board with with it that way, where we acknowledge at the time it was approved.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I think, you know, looking back at the jail one, I'm not sure why, but I think Ryan McCarthy was on board or putting one up. But it just got kind of put to the wayside, never happened.
Yeah, I don't know, because on this one, I'm pretty sure the the architect paid for the plaque of the courthouse.
A lot of times they do.
They they want their name on the building, so I would think that they would be interested in.
We got to tell Deb, she's got to put the bill.
Or we won't put their name on it.
Yeah.
I, question about the remodel or jail, are we, well, we can discuss that. I don't see a need for that one, but we'll talk about it, about the remodel.
The Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
That was a discussion that started over two years ago.
We'll talk.
It just updated.
Yeah, I know, well.
I I think it should be.
Oh, well.
We spent several million over there.
Whatever, we'll, we'll, we'll talk. I, it doesn't matter to me, I I don't care. I I was fine with not having it either, so whatever. IT.
Good morning. This is a quick discussion to see if IT should expand into the probation space that was vacated by probation about a month ago. The two, I I'm going to tell you, the two main reasons are that it's it's to have the IT department in the same physical location. And the other one is really for some security issues that we need to be compliant with for the for the the BCA is my understanding. And those are the two main reasons.
Just, just if, I'm sure the board knows, but there are two people now currently not in the same area. They're downstairs, so and I I think that's.
Yeah.
I think it's real important to get everyone back.
It would be great. So so again, so we really discussed two different, kind of two different things. One was to have us just expand into the area and the other was to have us move into the area. I I think I was kind of positive that we should have both. And after kind of talking with the team and some more reflection, we're okay with either decision you make. We just, we want to make sure that that we don't ruin the, right now, some of those doors are used as a fire exit. So we just don't want it, we want to make sure that the that the doors that are used as fire exits kind of behind the the buildings aren't, aren't taken up. There's a door between current IT and probation that remains unlocked all the time. Then there's a door between IT and the current IT space and the zoning department that remains unlocked all the time. And those, I, my understanding was this for fire. I don't even know that that's true.
We don't need to say that in front of everybody. No, they're not locked all the time. They're locked during the business hours all the time. Okay, but we don't, we don't want to have unlocked doors all the time.
No.
So with that being said, I think, I think we can, I would suggest that we allow them to move to use the old probation area. And we don't have a better, another use for the your current space now. So until we find a need for that, I think we can. We can work, you can work through the whole space and and as we move forward, we we can, you can see how your flow goes and how the adjustment is, you know. And if we have, you know, if we have to have that space and we, then we see, see what your needs are and.
We can, we can figure it out.
But right now, I think we don't see a need unless someone else can see something. But in this short term, I think we can utilize the whole area up there for for IT.
That's, that sounds good, thank you.
I I do have a concern, and I know that you're going to come up with it with, you're going to bring this to my attention. You're going to want those windows if that if that hallway ever goes.
Absolutely.
If you know there's, the hallway goes in the backside.
There's cross.
Windows on the backside, so we can see it coming that while those windows are there, can't we?
Of course.
Sally port, if that Sally port moves, those windows are going to have to be opened and that, oh.
It's a whole big deal.
It's going to expand quite.
In Commissioner Nelson, I just, I actually did a sort of a space review with the courthouse committee. This was on that discussion. So I think the courthouse committee has endorsed the probation space being used by IT. I think the one value as you've toured probation that really helps IT is IT, as Judy alluded to it, is has a BCA compliance component to it. So really, people can't wander into IT. It really needs to be IT personnel in there. What's nice about that, if somebody doesn't have an IT issue, they could walk into the waiting room of the of what was the probation office and get an interface with someone on the other side of the window there. So there's, there's a lot of value and synergies there for the IT department beyond bringing everyone together. And that's, that's also a big win. So, yeah, that was really the one that stood above any other ideas that we had. But it's an ongoing process, looking at the future. Commissioner Nelson alluded to that hallway that's there. You know, if that were to ever happen, the first domino last to fall is have a Sally port that, you know, where prisoners can go right into the jail.
You're not getting a window just so we can move.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's a lot of work and we are work looking at space issues, but it started with the courthouse committee, have some discussion with them.
And and you know, the immediate response is no, no, no. But if you're looking long term, ten years, you know, this isn't something, so in ten years, you can maybe get a window.
We are happy today with what we are going to have.
The these longer term flows, because then the then the thought is, how much is Human Services working from home? Is that expanding? And then we have the building here in ten years, maybe Human Services will be all over here and that building will be discarded, you know, disposed of. So I mean, long term, we have to keep.
That is discussed if we ever remodel jail is security, because now the prisoner's got to go up the elevator and there's a lot of issues. But if there is Sally port is over there and we're utilizing that, say, for whatever, eliminate that, so.
But it's long term. This isn't, this isn't next year, two years. Nope. But I think it's, I think it's valuable to say this is our ten year goal on construction.
Oh, that's awesome. Just encourage the commissioners that have not gone on that, it's really a circus ride to on how you take a prisoner from from the from the jail to the to the court jail. I mean, it's a series of elevators up and down hallways and it's an experience, so I would encourage.
If you do that before, you belittle us for doing it that way. Remember, the jail was there, so that's, before, before that, prisoners were walked in the hallway. Before that, they were walked in the hallway, walked past the victims. It was, it was bad. And we were, I mean, the courts thanked us tremendously for for the upgrade. And we we had the justices were up and they thanked us personally for for the the improvements that were made. It 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 was how it had to be, because we didn't, we had no other solutions.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Oh, maintenance.
I got that. It'll be the next thing.
Miles?
Yep. Well, good morning. I have a couple items here for your consideration. First one is replacement of a boiler, thermal solution boiler, boiler. We had one that failed on us. It's one of our main heat sources for this building and the sheriff's office. It's a two boiler system, but one's failed. We need two boilers to heat, so.
And this is another example where I think we should just fix, fix what we have. But then the price was thirty percent more than buying a new one, so I had to change my.
Correct.
Way of thinking.
So in kind of history, these boilers are fifteen years old. And according to all the maintenance standards on new boilers, that's their end of life usually.
Fifteen year.
And it's, it seems very short. I I understand that. Where's the pellet burner? Is that still done?
No, we took that out.
Oh, we did? Nope, that's gone, yeah, so.
What is the salvage value of a boiler if you were to remove it? Is there a salvage value, a trade in value of some sort?
There isn't on this, what the components that went bad are would be the only thing. I will mention though, Pat, that we are going to keep components off the old one since we have three other ones. So we have a couple of controllers that that are still usable on the on this old one. So we will be able to take parts off of that that we can have as spare parts, so the other ones need that down the road, so. So again, the proposal or the considerations for boiler replacement, a hundred and one thousand seven hundred dollars. Johnson Controls, they're their main vendor on that unit to begin with. I did reach out to Honeywell with no response back. I think Honeywell is having some issues with some employees and stuff, so.
So unfortunately, this is not budgeted. This will have to come out of reserves. We we discussed a little bit that in both finance and courthouse that we're going to have to but put in a, somehow, we're going to have, when we come budgeting, we're going to have to put in a capital expenditure line, because we've got three of them here and they're, you know, with the maintenance on on the, you know, we talked about the new jail, well, that's not getting, so, you know, that's already a couple of, couple of years old and and it costs money to upkeep. So one of the options was maybe starting a fund and maybe put in reserve fund earmarked for these big type of things and and start a annual contribution out of budget for fifty thousand just to keep that, keep that balance. So we, so in the future, we have monies for these, I mean, they're not getting cheaper.
No, no.
So, but that's for us to discuss in 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 the fall. So at this time, the recommendation is to replace it with reserve funding for a hundred and one thousand and change.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred dollars. I'll make a motion to replace the old boiler.
Motion by Dave?
I'll second.
Second by Erica, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, motion carries. Give us the quote for fixing it.
Oh, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand to fix what we have.
That's crazy.
A hundred and one to buy it all brand new.
Labor, yes.
Say they don't want to fix.
They don't want to fix.
No.
That's exactly what's what happens with this.
But it's just like at your, in homes, do you, you can't afford to call someone out to fix anything anymore. By the time you do it, you, it's a throwaway appliance these days, so. It's the nature of our, so.
Okay. And the second item I have here is some tree trimming around the courthouse. I've been here six years and we haven't really done anything professionally, done some trimming ourselves. We did have this company reach out to us. I I tried to do it last year and then I think we were ready to to bring it to the board and then all the vendors backed out because we had a storm came through. So this company reached out to us early in this this year and gave us a quote to go around. We, I rocked around the gentleman around the courthouse here, the parking lot. And if you guys have an opportunity to do that, go look, but they need serious, some work done. This company did a quote for us, there's basically three pages, covered different areas, the north side of the the building with the trees there. And then around the side here was another quote. And then, of course, the parking lot would be a third quote. Again, this is the time of year to do it according to this, the professionals, before things start budding out and whenever spring does show up. So again, the the total cost was six thousand eight eighty five to do all three areas. If we were to supply some help, meaning we would remove the rubbish and everything else that comes with the trimming, they would knock another eight hundred dollars off that. So and I I'm, I'm confident we're able to help them. We can, I do have a custodian that works, Desha, he's able to help him with that work. So I, my suggestion would be we do that and then total cost would be five thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars.
Well, I would like to entertain a motion to do the full amount. And if you can do it, I would strongly, you know, thank you to do to do that. But if something comes up, I wouldn't want to stall this. So I would recommend the full amount with any tax or taxes plus any taxes.
Okay.
I I I just don't want to hold, I I if something comes up internally where we have to rate a hundred bucks, that we want it cleaned up on as soon as possible. If that's, so unless the board wants to make, but. Entertain a motion to approve?
I would agree. I'll make a motion to approve up to the the full amount.
Six thousand eighty-five plus tax if applicable.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll I'll second.
Any questions, any comments? I I appreciate you volunteering and I hope that we do do it.
Okay.
Um, but if if things, if they're here and we don't have the staff, someone's sick, I, we want to have the option to get it done, so.
Yes, they asked to help you.
That's, again, that's the
That's an option.
It's been up and down and I haven't been in touch with Steve Joy too much about that. I would, you know.
If he's got helpers or not, so.
Yeah, this is just more the, when they start cutting branches, we throw a tarp down and we do have a truck and we, you know, we can run things to the the rubbish pile and stuff if need be, and I I just try and save some costs here if it's available, so.
Well, and and this again comes out of reserve fund.
Yeah, and then what did you, you have, what do you have in your budget currently for those, like eight, five hundred bucks or either?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred bucks. So then we talked to him, talked to you about maybe increasing that, so you do it, not maybe not every year, but do it.
Partial each year and then it's not a big hit like.
And then again, we have the money budgeted.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We expressed our threat thanks earlier too for your help in transitioning over
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To the, um, new Public Works Building.
We have meetings today. Actually, they're doing startup.
They're doing some startups.
Start up today, in the next few days, so.
And tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow and next day.
But, you know, these things just don't open themselves and they fall into place without about without extra work and, um, thank you for for helping out and raising questions, even if we don't do, you know, the questions have been asked, you address them, and then we move forward, so. Um, we discuss power over there and here, those are things you have to have have to address upfront and and, uh, thank you for asking the questions.
Well, I appreciate that. I will, I'll relay that to 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 the guys that are actually going to be doing the work with me, so.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, are we ready for close?
Yeah, last, you want to take a break before that, or?
We had a little break.
We'll come out of it with a break, I'm sure.
Sure.
All right, and we did add one thing to the agenda after we come out of closed session is the possible, um, approval of of a contract. So that is on the agenda afterwards, and then we're going to work on some of these, um, policies and public forms, so. So with that, I'm going to read the closed session motion. Um, I'm asking for a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute one thirty D O three subdivision one B. The governing body may by majority vote in public committee to have a closed meeting to discuss strategy, labor negotiation, for labor negotiation, including negotiation strategies or developments, discussion and review for labor negotiation proposals, connect pursuant to sections one seventy-nine, one to one seventy-nine, eight, two, five. Entertain that as a motion.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We will enter into closed session and we